I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the roll.
Belzak.
Here.
Clistic. Gustafson. Kenny.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Five present and two absent.
We have a quorum, questions and comments and announcements of a general nature. Does anyone in the audience want to address the council on anything possibly not even on this agenda tonight? If not, we'll move ahead to approval of minutes. I'd like a motion and a second for approval of the August 1st, 2022 minutes. Moved by Alderman Kennedy, seconded by Alderman Shower. Any questions or comments?
Oh, wait a minute. I do have, I do have one, remember, and I apologize. You have, Kelly Glisten's name is in here was, is misspelled.
Who's Joe?
Kelly Glisten. There was, there was communication with Kelly Glisten and that, I noticed that was misspelled and I forgot to say something earlier.
Okay.
It's, it should be Glisten, G.L.I.S.A.N.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for catching it.
Anything else?
Joe Kenny.
If not, then the roll, um, the roll.
Kenny.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
The minutes have been approved. Receiving our communications. Any of the other people have communications for the council? Mary?
Thank you. I have received some calls and emails from residents over in the town home and condominium community on the south side of 55 at Lamont Road regarding the new development, the Darien Heights development that's going to be coming up. And there was an article in the Patch and there was concern that a groundbreaking was happening. And I did talk with Dan and Jordan and Brian and, you know, conveyed to them that final permitting has not happened. And I know that they were just looking to, the homeowners groups were looking to be kept in the loop. Is there any updates on that, Dan?
I could tell you right now, we're getting ready to issue the permits. Just a matter of Don Morris coming in with the plan review fee and inspections. And if there should be some minor comments, if there are any minor comments, there'll just be conditions. Everything else is all really set to go. We received a letter of credit. The plan will be recorded tomorrow. And really, that's the extent of it. And, you know, once that happens, they'll be scheduling their, we'll have a pre-construction meeting with them just for the site. But, you know, we'll probably make the homeowner association representatives, put them in contact and maybe also speak with their marketing department and/or the developer himself for any additional information on the unit, so on and so forth.
Yeah, that would be great because they had, once again, you know, heard rumors that there were major changes to the building. Obviously, Mr. Swanson is not as prevalently involved anymore, that there was a whole new group, even though the group that is going to, you know, oversee it and manage it and the owners are the same group of people that were always involved. So I think there just was some confusion.
I'm not sure. I mean, the unit height, I'm sorry, the height of the building is the same. The color schematics, again, we have no say in that. I know there was something that they tried to work out originally between Paul Swanson, homeowners association there. You know, whether or not that came to its fruition, we, you know, we really don't get involved with that portion of it. But the units are the same, so I'm not sure what that exactly is.
Yeah, if you could just, once that final permitting takes place, if there could be contact with the reps of the homeowners from the town homes and the condominiums, I think that would be very much appreciated.
Yeah, it should be tomorrow as a matter of fact, on the final permitting.
Okay.
In chaos, Mary?
Yes. And then there has been, Mayor Marches and I have been receiving quite a, having different conversations, I shouldn't say quite a bit, regarding people and the individuals in the Brookridge Creek community as it relates to the honeybee farms, farmers' markets that they have on Fridays and Saturdays between 10:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. and the excessive traffic and parking. So Mayor Marches has reached out to the DuPage County Board individuals and some others. And we've been in contact with our Darien police because that particular parcel of land is not the city of Darien, even though it backs right up to the city of Darien. It is unincorporated Downers Grove, DuPage County.
Just to answer some questions, Julie Runahan has been extremely helpful. Julie had DuPage County go out there with the Health Department. And the Health Department indicated that everything is fine, that there is no issue with regard to her sale of produce. She also had the county go out to make sure that they still met the conditions of their, of what it means to be an agricultural entity. And they still do. They still meet those conditions. And basically, that all supports documentation we received two years ago when we did this, the first complaints came in, we did the search two years ago. So Julie and Brian Kuduski got back to me too. Julie did come back and say that DuPage County doesn't control the transportation issue, so they have nothing to say about what goes on in the street. John Murphy, I guess, gave us an opinion that if the business grows to a certain extent, it could be considered a commercial business, which means she would have to provide parking because it's, but she only runs it six hours a week, so it really hasn't reached that point yet. So the concern right now is, is the parking. And it's our street and the right-of-way belongs to the owner on the one side and her on that side. Correct, Dan?
Yeah, it's part of, it's very limited right-of-way there. And we're trying to work with another individual on that block to see if there's an opportunity to get the two together to provide some additional parking. So that just happened as of late last week, but when, no final contact has been made with, I believe it's, I forgot her name, Cindy, is it? The owner of the?
Yes, Cindy's the owner of Honeybee.
Yeah, so got a call into her. So I'm gonna try to stop out there tomorrow to see if we can, you know, try to negotiate someone that's gonna be amicable between, if you know, for parking spaces. So we'll keep you posted.
It's something we need to work out. We still need to.
Right, yeah. We're trying to be positive about it and look at opportunities versus, you know, let's put up more signs and so on and so forth.
For those people that are concerned, the farm, the farm is basically here to stay. She's met all the conditions to establish that, that business. The concern is the parking.
Yeah. And potentially excessive parking posing a safety hazard to the people in Brookridge Creek, which are Darien residents. But yes, I mean, clearly, DuPage County's come back regarding the farm being here. I did go by there last week and, you know, at the time I went, everyone, all the cars were contained inside her fence. So there was no overflow parking on the street. So I think it depends at peak time. But, yeah, I just, it's important that we're listening to our residents. And Mayor Marches has done a great job in outreach and trying to, once again, revisit the questions that were posed two years ago. And thanks, Dan, for, you know, exploring alternatives. And I know Chief Thomas and Officer Norton was also like willing to, you know, talk with us and try to figure out some solutions as well.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone else have any other communications they'd like to share? Alderman Kennedy, Shower? I've got one. I've got actually two pieces of communication, but I'll only read one. As you know, we ask people to bring cans to the free concerts. And all those cans for all three concerts went to Our Lady of Mount Carmel. I just received this yesterday. This is from Father Jeff Smitek. And it said, Dear Mayor Marches and the Darien community, once again, thank you for the very generous donation to our food pantry. The funds raised at the last evening concert will help many of the poor with the local community. Thanks for the generosity of the city of Darien. Blessings, Father Jeff Smitek. So all those cans collected really went to serve a lot of people who had need. And I want to thank Mary and Lisa, who made sure that those got packed up every time we had a concert and they got over to Mount Carmel. But it was a ni, it was a nice effort. And I think we did a lot of good things with that.
Oh, yeah. And there were, people, like, there was no formal asking of financial donations, but people did make financial donations too. And that money's used to, we go to Aldi and go to the stores and buy stuff. And then we partner with the Northern Illinois Food Pantry to buy items at a much reduced rate. So thank you.
I think it's something, if we do this again next year, and I really believe we probably will be doing it, I'd like to do, see us even expand the idea of, you know, collecting things and then giving it to some charity, be it one of the churches or one of the local groups. All right. Takes us to the mayor's report. I know it says nothing there, but I got a couple items. Always, you know, it's been a while since I've been here, guys. So I just want to take a minute and wish all of our Darien students a safe and productive school year. As I noted in one of my more recent mayor's messages, each school year brings with it a chance at renewal, an opportunity to put any past failures behind you and to look forward to all the opportunities a new school year will bring. And I, so I just want to wish best wishes to the high school students, our junior high students, middle school students, elementary students here in Darien. As many of you might remember, Haley Bishop and Camden Kiefer came to us about a year ago. And they made a presentation to us about a farmer's market. Kathy Lencioni informed me a couple of weeks ago that Camden and Haley submitted their proposal and their plan to the Bill of Rights Institute. And they recently won a second-place award of $5,000. These were two sophomores who invited me to come last year. I went over there. They made an excellent presentation. You guys had an opportunity to see them present here. They presented to our Darien Citizen Action Committee. And Haley has informed me that she still wants to be part of whatever development we, however we take this farmer's market concept. But they won $5,000. And what I like about it is these are two young women that are involved civically. They're engaged in what's going on in this community. And I appreciate that. And I congratulate them on their award. I just wanted to say I'm really happy with the Darien rocks, the, rocks the greens. We had probably close to 600 people the last evening. All, I think all of you had a chance to be out there and listen to the music. We had three great bands. And I'll tell you, people, people were complimenting us throughout all, each one of those concerts, saying, thank you for doing this. We appreciate that. So many thanks to our staff and, and to April. My last thing is on a sadder note. Reverend Alphonse Micah, or Father L., as he is affectionately known, passed away Tuesday, August 30th. Father L. was a member of the congregation of the Marian Fathers of the Immaculate Conception. He was pastor emeritus of Our Lady at Peace Parish in Darien, formerly known as St. Mary's, which was established in 1959. And he served the parish for 47 years, seeing the building of the current church and the growth of the school. I personally had an opportunity to work with him when I served as school board president for Our Lady at Peace School and parish council president. And personally, I will always remember his commitment to the parish and especially to the children of the parish. And his, their service is being held right now for him. And there'll be a mass tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock at Our Lady at Peace for Father L. So many thanks to him for everything he gave to our community for the last 50-something years. And that's my mayor's report. Clerk's report, Joanne?
No report this evening. Thank you.
City administrator's report, Brian?
No report, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Department head information questions. Chief Thomas?
I have no report.
No report. And municipal services, Dan. We'll resurrect the conversation we had in, in workshop session as we, as, for the audience. As many of you know, the corner of Plainfield and Cass Avenue is one of our entryways into the city. And several months ago, a car left the road and went into the sign on the southwest corner, damaging that sign. That sign has been mangled and just hanging there for the last couple of months. The property owner has now settled with the insurance company. And they were looking to replace that sign with a very, very similar sign. And we, at the city, went to them with the idea of creating a sign that might enhance that corner. We have three, two other corners. They have beautiful water features. One has a clock tower. The other one has a beautiful wall welcoming people to the city of Darien. And so the idea, there's, there are basically three ideas, three concepts. One would be to work with the company called Digital Communication, which was the company formerly known as Chicago Billboard. We talked about them a couple of years ago in terms of putting up a billboard sign, message sign on the corner that now has the city of Darien wall and water feature. That proposal died. And we now have the feature over there that we have. The other proposal would, and they would pick up the entire cost of rebuilding that sign, landscaping that sign. And it would probably cost them around $270,000 to do that. And they would have ownership of the sign. And the advertising on that sign would be Darien businesses as well as possibly businesses outside the city of Darien. The second proposal would be to have a three-sided sign, which would list the current businesses. We would build it up. We would landscape it. But at the top of that, we would have a digital signage, which would show community events, city events. And that we would have control over because it would be something that we would fund, something we would pay for. And then the third option would be to allow them just to go in there for their $20,000 to $30,000 and replace the sign with a sign that's very similar to what was, what was there. And during our work session, we had a discussion of this to get some initial feedback from the council. And I was just wondering if there's any additional feedback. There seemed to be some indication from some that it was, the digital communications was not something that they would want. I believe Ted and, and Mary felt that way, as did Joe, Kenny. And again, we don't have two Aldermen here tonight, so I really can't speak for them. Lester seemed to lean either way. And Mr. Alderman Belzak would like to see a proposal before he made any kind of decision.
And it's not that I don't want necessarily a digital sign. I, my major concern, as it was prior, was the lack of control over what's on the sign. And by partnering with Digital Communications slash Chicago Billboard, they get to main control of, over the sign. But perhaps the best thing to do is to give us the opportunity to look at all three options and the dollars that are associated. I mean, obviously, one option takes us completely out of the mix and it puts it on the owner to do what they want, similar to what they had before. But the other two options of going back to the drawing board with digital communications or revisiting the plan from, what, two years ago? And then exploring how much it would cost for the city of Darien to come up with something similar to what's across the street with a digital feature and utilize the money that the building owners would be putting towards it in the amount of $30,000.
Alderman Belzak?
Yeah, to follow up on what Alderman Sullivan said, Alderwoman Sullivan, there's three things that are different on each of these. Cost, size, and control. And until we get something in front of us that tells us the cost, not somewhere between X and Y, when the, when it's a big difference, this, we haven't talked size at all today. And control, we kind of know what the control is, but I actually don't remember what percentage under the billboard. It was 20% that we had control over? I don't remember.
Just to remind, refresh your memories, there would be eight advertisements. And every eight, we would have one. The city would have.
I thought that when they came, originally, that's what it was. But then I thought when they came back, they were giving us more to try to entice us.
They're giving one to an nonprofit or to a local organization.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was two of eight. But, but I don't remember exactly. And which is why I don't think we should be making any decisions on things that are in front of us right now. So I would like to see.
No, really, the whole purpose of this was whether to engage in any further discussions, you know, based on a straw poll, if there was an interest. And three options, that, that's a great opportunity for staff to say, okay, business owner, you could have the sign. We're not a part of anything. Number two is to engage, and I stand corrected, it's community digital displays. So excuse me for that, to engage the services of community, the digital displays, to come up with a concept along with, you know, the terms again. So ba, and the terms are basically the same as were before. Yes, we all don't remember all those details, but the size is gonna change somewhat as well. This piece of the corner here is a little bigger. There's a little more opportunity, viewing area, so on and so forth. So the third option is that we, along with the owners, come to some type of partnership to be able to put a display, a marquee up on top, a three, said, three, three marquees, at which we would be able to control. So that's really, again, what we're looking for. Because this is moving very fluidly with this business. So if there's some inclination for option one, two, or three, staff would at least appreciate their feedback to move forward or not move forward.
We've heard from Mary and we've heard from Alderman Belzak.
I think there's one more item that we're not looking at either, is the, the responsibility of, say the sign gets hit by, you know, someone runs into the sign, who carries the insurance? Who's, who's responsible for fixing that, you know, fixing that sign? Now, if it's digital, digital signage, then they're responsible for fixing that sign. But if it's the other two options, who's responsible for the, who carries the liability insurance and who means to, we have to look at that too, right?
I agree. And that's all something that will be covered through an easement. Because we would need also easement rights. And again, that's getting into the technical jargon, which is, which would be similar to what was proposed across the street.
Well, the previous sign was struck and it was covered by insurance. Wouldn't it be the same thing?
I think in this case, if this, if it was a couple of other options where we had the signs, that, in theory, that would be our property. We would carry the insurance on that.
Or additional insured, whatever the case is.
Yeah, I mean, our insurance is revenue-based. It doesn't, it wouldn't affect, if we added another sign there, it wouldn't affect our insurance rates at all.
Well, let's, let's do this. Since we've heard, we've had a, we had a very good discussion in workshop session. I think, Dan, what the council is basically saying is they'd like to have more clarification on all three options. They'd like to see what digital display would present for that corner in terms of size. I think when we discussed it today, they don't look like they're gonna change that advertising part of it. But at least give us an idea of what it might look like on that corner. And maybe some idea of what the cost would be if we entered into agreement with the property owner where we built up that corner, we built up the sign, we did three signs with the businesses on it and the digital display at the top of it. Find out what the cost of that would be. And what are they, basically what they're saying is they're gonna, they would just simply replace it with the same kind of sign they had before.
That's correct. That's why there was an opportunity to reach out and, you know, co-mingle with the business and say, hey, you know, let's enhance this area. It's the last corner left besides the other corner, which we're gonna try to work with DuPage County on a landscaping plan with them. But that's for later on.
And I realize that this is moving quickly. And I hate to throw additional work at you, but if you could prepare something or get us some facts and figures or maybe colorful displays of what this might look like, I think council would appreciate that.
We'll do. We'll touch base with the broker's representative and maybe see if he's available for, put it on the agenda, maybe under director's report or mayor's report for a follow-up on the next city council.
Does that, does that meet with everybody's?
If we, beginning, because this is moving fast, as Dan said, there's a lot of moving parts. If it were to come to the city council next meeting, we would like, we would like to get some formal direction. I wouldn't want to put it on in two weeks and then the council say, okay, put on a vote for two weeks. And it's, it, it wouldn't be a vote to approve anything.
Right.
It's just so we're, primarily Dan is going after this and not wasting his time. So I think it would be some direction for us to ju, to just bring back more info based on the three options. It wouldn't be a, a vote to go do any of the options specifically.
Right. There'd be public hearings involved also, you know, so it's just, you know, where we're, what we want to see is really the goal of this.
Yeah, I, it's something that I'd like to see, if we can get some information over the next two weeks, if we can get that out even minus, you know, not having a city council meeting, just to get that information out to people. I'd appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Dan, that you wanted to present?
That's all I have at this point.
Thank you.
Actually, I'm sorry, Mayor, let me take that back. This evening at our municipal services committee, I did mention to the committee that street lights have recently become an issue. It appears that a lot of the LED streetlights have reached their useful life as well as their warranty period. So we're, at this point, we're noticing that there's a lot more streetlights that are going on on a weekly basis, anywhere from two, two to three lights per week, basically. So, and it looks like the LED drivers themselves, LED drivers themselves are the parts that's failing. While we've looked at the replacement of the part itself, well, that's inexpensive. It's the labor that it would take to basically rewire it, in which case would be cost prohibitive. So, you know, we're encouraging the residents, you know, cause when they see these lights out. The police department is also trying to assist us in light outages. But again, I want to bring the council, bring it to their attention. So there might be, we may have to look at additional streetlights for budget purposes coming up in our workshop here very soon. Thank you.
All right. That takes us to our treasurer's report. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 222308 in the amount of $1,730,948.89 from the listed funds, as well as payroll for the period ended August the 11th, in the amount of $273,955.88 for a total be approved of $2,4,904.77.
Motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
Michael?
Next, requesting council's approval of warrant number 222309 in the amount of $392,271.86 from listed funds. Payroll for the period ended August 25th, 2022, in the amount of $278,399.36 for a total be approved of $670,671.22.
Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Again, questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Shower.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
Warrant's been approved. We have three monthly reports. The treasurer's gonna just read the last one, the most up-to-date one. Mike?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This represents the performance for the first quarter of the fiscal year. The auditors just completed their annual audit. They will be presenting at the October 3rd meeting. But these are solid numbers to begin with. So the general fund shows year-to-date revenue of $5,894,557, expenditures of $3,954,081, current balance of $6,539,411. Water fund year-to-date revenue of $1,139,602, expenses of $1,363,509, current balance of $3,222,962. Motor fuel tax fund year-to-date revenue of $227,244, expenses of $75,741, current balance of $1,089,538. Water depreciation fund year-to-date revenue of $3,687, expenses of $564,495, current balance of $3,195,899. And the capital improvement fund year-to-date revenue of $137,015, expenses of $1,083,840, current balance of $13,026,26,604.
Thank you, Mike. You want to update us on a little bit on the police pension fund?
Yeah, we had our meeting last Thursday, the police pension fund for the reviewing the period ended June 30th. So it was sort of a delay in the, the regular meeting. Naturally, as everyone knows, and if you read anything about the stock market on a daily basis, it wasn't the best of periods. This is for the second calendar quarter of the year. The city reports on an April 30th fiscal year. So there's some overlap here. This was for the quarter, April, May, and June. April was already reflected in the last year's audit report. Just to give you an idea, we were expecting a poor performance. But the second quarter performance was a negative 11.6% return for those three months. On a secondary basis, the consolidation of the pension funds, all the downstate, which are all police pension funds outside the city of Chicago, are currently being consolidated at the state level. Hopefully you get a little better performance as well as lower expenses. And that the transfer of these assets from our police pension fund to the state level. of these assets from our police pension fund to the state level started to occur on September 1st, and we'll anticipate to take approximately two weeks before all the funds have been transferred.
Thank you, Mike. Standing committee report, so any of the chairman have reports they want to discuss? Mary?
The Administrative Finance Committee met tonight, and we had a pretty full agenda. As Treasurer Corn reported, the auditors are coming to the October 3 city council meeting. They did come to Admin Finance tonight and gave us a preview of the audit, and I just want to thank city staff and everyone who helped contribute to the success of completing the audit for the fiscal year '22. And also, as Alderman, as Treasurer Corn reported about the actuary for the police pension, that individual will also be attending the October 3 meeting to report on that, that report as well. The next Economic Development Committee meeting will be held on Thursday, October 6 at 7 p.m.
Thank you. Alderman Belzak?
Thank you, Mayor Marquez. We had a municipal services meeting earlier today in which we approved the August 1 minutes. Our next municipal services meeting is currently scheduled for September 26 at 6 p.m. in council chambers.
Thank you. Aldman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Police committee meeting are scheduled to meet on Monday, September 19 at 6 p.m. across the parking lot and the police training room, pending agenda items.
Thank you. Takes us to questions and comments, agenda-related. Anyone have, in the audience have any questions or comments? Just for the sake of the viewing audience and those here, everything on the consent agenda has, will be moved, excuse me, on the new business agenda, since it was approved by the Municipal Services Committee tonight, is going to be moved to the consent agenda. Takes us to old business, there being none, we go to the consent agenda, and I'll read each of these items. Item A, under the consent agenda, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution approving a contract extension, year two, with equal clean maintenance to provide janitorial services for the City of Darien in an amount not to exceed $26,496. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase, installation, and wiring of five streetlights for the Farmingdale Drive Streetlight Improvement Project with rags electric in an amount not to exceed $32,500. Item C, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance amending Section 3-3-7-11, C of the Darien City Code, which is liquor control regulations. And item D, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution for maintenance of streets and highways by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code, expenditure of motor fuel tax funds for the fiscal year 2021, 2022 year, general maintenance, maintenance of various streets and rights of way that impact the city streets in an amount not to exceed $23,479.43. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Alderman Kenny, second by Alderman Belzak, and the roll.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
Consent agenda's been approved. Any questions or comments and announcements that any of the aldermen like to make? Mary?
I know this has been communicated in Darien Direct Connect and on the city website, along with, obviously, the Rotary promoting it, but the Rotary Club of Darien is going to be having a recycling extravaganza, drive-through and drop-off, and it's actually going to be held here, but if everyone wants to save the date for Saturday, October 22, 9 a.m. to 12 noon, and, you know, it's also going to have document shredding, and there's a list of additional items that, from medical things, syringes, epi-pins, bikes, bike repair tools, medical equipment, eyeglasses. They're partnering with a lot of other organizations, like the Lions Club and Scares with books, records, musical instruments. I mean, I think it's an extraordinary offering, and it gives everyone an opportunity to do, instead of spring cleaning, fall cleaning, so mark your calendar for that. And I know LRS has also got their electronics recycling event scheduled for, I believe, the weekend, week of September 19, isn't it?
I just closed up.
I think, okay, it's okay, but you just have to pre-register for that, so make note. You can't just put it out, you got to sign up for it, so.
Anyone else? Mike?
I think you've already mentioned what a success the concert series has been this summer over June, July, and August. I just wanted to mention that it came to pass that we've had a lot of support from our engineering firm made a contribution financially, helping support that. I think our city attorney made a contribution, and Mary, you just mentioned LRS. I mean, I, I think they're doing a great job with our new garbage contract, and you won't notice it, but at the concerts, they provided all the porta-potties and all the garbage containers and everything there, so they made an in-kind donation to help make that successful. So I just wanted to recognize those companies a little bit that you may not have really noticed if you'd gone to the concert.
Thank you. You know, and we'd like to, we also had, at our last concert, we had a number of local vendors there. Hopefully, next year, we can get some additional vendors, maybe, maybe your personnel issues won't be there next year, Dave, and we could have Burrito Paradise out there for one of our concerts next year.
We would love to do that.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, motion to adjourn? So moved, Aldman Kenny, seconded by Alderman and Vaughn. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.
Oh, it's okay.